Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Here.
Mulligan.
Here.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and would you remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Chris Jerem?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just take a moment this week to pause and reflect on the people of Egypt and the region and that part of the world. I have witnessed that right of peaceful assembly and petition of ballots. We take and cherish here not only the people who do that, but just think about them.
City Clerk, certify publication of daily record on February 4th, notes for pre-council and regular city council meeting February 8, 2011. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Ordinance on final rating resolutions and planning board attachments, items five through seven are one case. Five is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate into that district properties generally located northeast of 132nd and West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution to implement a plot entitled CVS III Edition is hereby accepted. Preparation of final plot is authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend. And seven is resolution that the replat transmitted herewith entitled CVS III Edition, located northeast of 132nd and West Center Road is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on items five through seven begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions that you might have with respect to these items.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roque.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on a consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers eight through 10 were held on February 1st. Do we have a motion?
Most approved.
Roque.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 11 through 16 and 18 and 19 begin now. Are there any proponents? 11 through 16, 18 and 19, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roque.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Now, item number 17, which was taken off the consent agenda, resolution to reappointment of Neil Winford to serve as a resident commissioner of the Omaha Housing Authority is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing on item number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
My name is Joan Nygros and I am on the Board of Commissioners for the Omaha Housing Authority. And I just come here to represent the residents of public housing. According to the Nebraska Fair Housing Law and HUD regulation, every person who receives public assistance in housing is entitled to participate in the nomination process to name the resident commissioner. The Omaha Housing Authority started that process on December 27th and mailed out nomination forms. In the midst of that process, and they did have 30 days to respond and send those back, in the midst of that process, Neil Winford was reappointed for five years. So, the people who had received that nomination form did not send it back because they thought the seat was filled. I would like to see them have an opportunity for us to mail the nomination form out and give them 30 days and let them participate in an election. They do have a right to vote or nominate someone to sit in that seat and that has been denied them.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Catherine Mahern and I'm a faculty member at Creighton Law School. I'm opposing this because the Nebraska statute 7115104 requires that the opportunity to be nominated be directed at all persons with direct assistance from the agency. The United States Housing Act also states that there is required membership on the board by a resident that is directly assisted by a public housing agency. If there's any doubt about Section 8 recipients being a direct recipient of the Omaha Housing Authority, 24 CFR 964.410 gives a definition of directly assisted to mean any public housing resident or a recipient of housing assistance in the tenant-based Section 8 program. Thousands of persons who have received direct assistance from the Omaha Housing Authority were not invited to participate in this process and were not sent the letter that was sent out by Commissioner Wayne, I believe in December of 2010. Therefore, I would object to this and ask that you not support it until all persons who are directly assisted are provided the opportunity to place their names in and be appointed as commissioner.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the process was followed. In the beginning, the process was usurped to a certain extent, but we recognized the error. We went back and did it. All residents were sent letters. Those who were interested did send letters that they were interested. They were all reviewed. We had an opportunity to look at that list of individuals that did apply. We felt that because the organization has some of the current issues that it faces, some of those you've read about, others, I can explain to you in detail if we want to go that far, but I don't see the necessity to do that. All of the rules and regulations were followed. Everyone did have the opportunity to participate. 17, 16 or 17 names were put forward to the mayor. The mayor has the opportunity to make the choice. The mayor makes the choice, not the OHA board, not the residents. The mayor gets the opportunity to make the choice. And so, with that, all of the rules were followed. There were no really side issues, and so, I don't see any reason for this not to go forward. Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be making a motion in a few minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Stothard.
Could the woman from the legal, from the faculty come back in? I was unclear at, you have to repeat your name and your address.
It's Catherine Mahern.
Okay.
And I'm at Creighton Law School at 2120 Cass Street.
Okay, I got a little confused at the point that you were trying to make because you were quoting state statutes and that's a little above and beyond my knowledge. But what were you trying to say? I mean, were you trying to say that some residents did not get?
Correct.
Okay.
The Housing Authority has two types of persons who are assisted. Those who are in public housing and those who are recipients of a voucher under the Section 8 voucher program. Public housing recipients all live in housing that's owned and operated by the Housing Authority. Section 8 recipients, it's private landlords but whose rent is paid for by the Housing Authority. They were not sent that letter and, in fact, I made an open records request to the Housing Authority asking who was sent that letter. And the response was, public housing recipients.
So, your point was the Section 8, the people that live in Section 8 housing were not given the opportunity to submit their names for nomination?
Correct. And it's clear from both state and federal law that they are required to be informed of that opportunity.
All right.
And they were not.
All right.
Actually, I have a number of Section 8 clients. I did ask a few of them as well. So, besides the open records request, I've been told this.
All right, thank you. And is there somebody from legal that can address that?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. What Ms. Mahern states is correct that OHA has two ways to point or to put a resident on the board. One is through an election. The other is through asking for nominations throughout their housing and then those names get submitted to the mayor and the mayor then makes a selection. The question that Ms. Mahern's presenting to us is whether or not the Section 8, that's one part of the OHA Housing Group, has been notified or given the opportunity to submit a nomination. And she correctly states the federal regulations that say direct assistance means Section 8 housing and those who have direct assistance are able to then submit a nomination. I mean, so, all those facts are correct from that standpoint. I guess the question is from the council's standpoint, is that something we should be looking at? The mayor simply gets the names, the list of names of 16 people, makes a selection from that. I'm not sure it's our obligation to go beyond that. That might be an issue how OHA did it. That's for another body, maybe another group to look at. We have a nomination that came from OHA that appears to be, have gone through the process and that's what's before the council.
All right, thank you. And then, I guess?
Let me add in addition to that, that three of the people that are on the 16, that are 17, there were 17 names that were submitted to the mayor. Of that 17 names, three of them are from Section 8. So, Section 8 was informed. To say that Section 8 was not informed is untrue. I make a motion to approve.
Mrs. Stothard, were you complete, you still have the floor? Good day, okay. Mr. Gray, anything further?
No.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Okay, Mr. Kratz. We need some help here. I came in here ready to vote yes on this and then I, I'm now wanting to make sure that the city is not in a position where, you know, we're going to regret it later. And we need, we need your advice and advice that protects this council. I mean, there's the OHA deal and there's Creighton and there's all of that, but what about us? What about the council? What position protects this council the best?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Simply put, the mayor received a list of names from OHA. He is required from that list to select somebody and then put that before the council. And then, it's up to the council to vote that up or down, one way or the other.
Can a lawsuit be brought against us if they find later that not enough Section 8 housing people were contacted?
Let me answer that in two ways. First of all, the lawsuit should be brought against, if any, against OHA, not the city council or the city, but also, secondly, we're always seem to be included in any type of lawsuit and whether or not it's valid is another issue.
You think the council's protected?
Yes.
Ms. Mahern, sorry to have you come back and forth.
Just repeat your name for the record.
Catherine Mahern.
Thank you.
As an academic colleague, do you, are you standing in for this to make a point to try and move this council? Are you planning to go beyond that and take it further beyond today?
Well, I think to the extent that the validity of the appointment of a board member is in question, then every decision that board member makes and its impact on persons, I think, leads to the question of the validity of that action. And lawsuits can arise out of, you know, the lack of apparent authority of a board to act when a member of that board has been placed, put in place without proper regulation, following the proper laws and regulations.
Of course, I'm not going to ask you to, whether or not you're going to file a lawsuit, that's, you know, something that I won't go, I won't go there, but would you say that it's not out of the question?
I'm here to avoid that possibility.
Okay.
I'm here, I think, as a friend of the Housing Authority. I have sued the Housing Authority in the past. It's my desire to always work in order to avoid a situation where that would come up. I find this as corrective as anything else.
What is your proof, other than anecdotal, that the letter did not go out to Section 8 housing?
I sent a letter to the Housing Authority to Mr. Tim in January, asking him, on January 27th it was delivered, asking him to provide the information on who was notified, a copy of the letter and who was notified. And in the response I received in February, the response was that it was sent to public housing residents. In my request, I asked specifically if it was sent to the Section 8 recipients and public housing authority, both. And the response was that it was sent to public housing residents.
Mm-hmm.
Now, so, between the time I got this letter early in February and today, 30 days could not have elapsed, which is the time period that the state statute requires when you're notifying people of that opportunity.
And how many people did you interview that were Section 8 housing?
I just, when I was speaking to a couple of clients of mine.
Okay.
Who are clients for something completely unrelated.
Okay.
But I have quite a few clients who are recipients of benefits from the Housing Authority. They said they had not received.
They had not received.
But a couple of clients, two clients, who are in public housing, did tell me that they had received.
How do you account for the fact that three of the 17 are Section 8 housing?
They could have been solicited. They could have found out about it from somebody in public housing. They could have read about it in the newspaper. I don't know how they knew about it.
Is it possible that the three, that they could have received it and then the couple that you spoke to just saw it and threw it away in the trash because it looked like junk mail?
That's quite possible. I'm primarily responding, you know, responding based on the request I made under the Open Records Act to the Omaha Housing Authority about who they sent the letter to and I was told, public housing residents.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I don't know if anybody else wants to talk to you. You may not want to go too far, but just in general, and I'm not fussing, but I don't like messy things. It just, you know, help clean this up for me because I just don't like messy things. Thank you.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I would just add, from what I've learned in speaking with Mr. Gray, apparently there was a board meeting in December for the OHA board, December 13th. The board meetings are published, notice of those meetings are published, that the agendas are available for inspection, that the, this process was among the agenda items discussed at their December meeting. Presumably, when those matters are published and the agenda's available for inspection, the world is on notice of what happens at those meetings. Is that a fair summary, Mr. Gray?
That's accurate.
So, I'm comfortable that there's sufficient notice, that the whole entire universe would have had for that December 13th meeting based upon what I've heard from Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Mr. Stothard.
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Thompson. I'm just concerned, I'm still a bit concerned about the process and I just want to make sure the process was followed correctly because I know when you're dealing with HUD and federal money, this is all important, that we're following the process correctly. And that's why we did what we did a week ago and laid this on file and then brought it back. I have two questions I want to ask. Joan Nygros, I want to ask you again because I'm a little confused too at your point, but if you could just come up and re-identify yourself, I just want to ask you a question.
Joan, excuse me, Joan Nygros, Omaha Housing Authority Board Member.
Okay, I'm just going to, I want to clarify what I think your point you were trying to make was. Tell me if I'm right or wrong. What your point was is that since the letter went out on, and I forgot, the 27th.
Of December.
And we approved the appointment on the 11th, was your point then that we only gave two weeks? Basically, because once the appointment was made, the, from the 11th until the 28th, when I believe the nomination forms were given to come back in, then nobody would submit their name because they thought it was a done deal? Is that what your point is?
Yeah. It reminds me of years ago when we had a presidential election and when the East Coast closed their polls, they started announcing results and they found an impact on the West Coast because people would hear the results and say, "Well, I'm not going to go to the polls. It's a foregone conclusion who's won." And if you get a nomination form and you're going to fill it out, but then you read in the paper that someone's been reappointed to that a seat, then you don't, you don't apply. And I feel their rights were taken away and I think they should have had the 30 days. And all I'm asking is, we delay it, send out the forms again to everyone, make sure everyone gets a chance to vote. And all that will do is delay the appointment a month or two and the board can certainly function with one less commissioner for a month or two while we make sure correct procedure. And I was told by Dabbling Wall of HUD that people were denied the right to vote.
Are you aware, were any nomination forms turned in after the 11th?
I do not know that.
Okay.
I do not know that.
So, my last, my final question with you was going to be, what would you propose to remedy the situation and you just feel like that they need to have, that everyone needs to have the full 30 days?
OHA can resubmit the nomination form to everyone, public housing, including Section 8 people, and give them the required, I believe it's 30 days by federal and state law. And at the end of those 30 days, those names would be submitted to the mayor and he would choose. And all that does is delay the appointment for a month or two until we do the correct procedure.
All right. And if that was done, you would feel comfortable?
Absolutely.
That the process, no matter who was appointed by the mayor?
Absolutely. Anyone's name could be the one that the mayor would choose that's submitted, but I just think everyone should have an opportunity to vote. That's one of the things we learned last month, that the homeless get to vote and so, we should all have a right to vote.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then, the woman from the law school faculty, I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name. Mahern. And re-identify yourself, please.
Catherine Mahern.
And then, what would your suggestion be to remedy, in your opinion?
Sending out the identical letter, but now sending it out to both public housing as well as all Section 8 recipients who are in good standing.
And that, that's.
And given the 30 days required by law.
And that's what your request would be then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
I was trying to do this without, let me just cut you the chase here. On December 13th, what we were supposed to, what was supposed to have occurred in a public meeting, we asked that the, that the letters be sent out the day after the board meeting, which was on the 14th, which was when those letters were supposed to have gone out. Mysteriously, those letters didn't go out for 10 days. Now, we can speculate as to what the reasons were for that, but I think we all know. There is a power struggle going on on the board and that's what this is about. For this council to get caught up in that would be ridiculous for you all to be engaged in. The OHA, and to assume that we can do this with one less member right now, OHA has engaged in a number of activities that are, in fact, illegal. Number one, the co-mingling of funds is illegal. The dipping into reserves is illegal. This needs to be addressed and we need to have a seven-member board to get that done. Now, you've got several members who want to maintain the status quo. That's what this is about. This is a power struggle. It is simply, it is simply that. That is all that it is. There were no violation of the rules. If they do go to court, they would lose. I'm confident of it. And again, I think we ought to go ahead and move this forward. This, we've spent way too much time on something that's not council business, quite frankly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess there's no one here from the Housing Authority besides you, Ben, is there?
Fred Conley.
Fred Conley is here.
Oh, yeah, Fred, could you?
I'd be happy to.
Yes. Please state.
Fred Conley, Omaha Housing Authority.
Fred, would you just, would you verify what Mrs. Mahern has advised the council? I mean, is it, I just want to make sure that my understanding is correct, that letters went out to folks that lived in Housing Authority facilities.
Right.
But it did not go out to people that lived in Section, that were using Section 8?
That's not true. There were three Section 8 people that were on the list.
Well, Tom, I think, I think what's relevant here is, for years, the resident commissioner has been appointed with no letters sent out by the mayor. So, this is not, it's true. Now, Mrs. Mahern sent a request right after you canceled, was going to revisit Neil Winford's appointment, asking a number of questions. One of them happened to be the one she mentioned, but she didn't mention the other questions that she asked. What they were looking for is something that they could come before the council and disqualify Mrs. Winford. The only thing that she could find among the number of questions that she asked, and she can certainly give you a copy of the letter, was this issue about whether Section 8 people were ever notified. I think the fact of the matter is what Councilmember Jerem said is true. It's a public meeting. It's not only, it's actually videotaped and it's sent out. You can watch it on your computer if you choose to. So, the whole world had knowledge of the fact that we're seeking input from everyone in housing with regards to who should be nominated to fill the resident commissioner spot. So, this is not a new phenomenon and for years, they didn't even send out anything and just went ahead and reappointed the resident commissioner. So, what I'm trying to figure out is why is all of a sudden this is so important now that you got to dot every i and cross every t? It's not that important. HUD is not going to step in and do anything about how we choose the residents of the Housing Authority regardless of what Dabbling Wall tells you. That's not going to happen.
Well, I'm just trying to ascertain if we, if we did the right thing. I mean, if, if the.
The mayor gets a list of names. I think he had 16 or 17 names. He picks the one that he wants. I mean, that's just how it works. And to think that the mayor might change his mind if he gets 25 names, I think it's just fear of folly. The mayor's decided who he wants. He nominated this person originally, found that the process wasn't correct, went back, the process continued, they got 16 names, the mayor still chose the same person.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson. Mr. Festerson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson. No. Mr. President.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. President. I think we're getting caught up in a lot of process issues here, which I think is appropriate we follow, proper process, and that was what our action was last week, to reconsider and get this back on the agenda. And I guess we've heard from our attorney, although we've heard a few different accountings of what the process should be, we have heard from our attorney that he thinks the process has been followed at this point, so that's the advice to us that I think we should follow. But I don't want to lose sight of the importance of the appointment either. In fact, I think Ms. Winford's with us today. I'd be interested in if you were willing to talk to us a little bit about your qualifications and what you see as an OHA board member, what the needs are going forward. Should you be approved today?
My name is Neil Winford. I'm Omaha Housing Authority. I'm the resident commissioner for the authority. First of all, I want to say that when I was first appointed, I was sitting in a nursing home. I had broke my ankle. I didn't get a letter. I didn't know anything about commissioners. Never had a letter from anyone in housing. Now, I've lived in housing for a long, long time, never received a letter. So, when the mayor called me in the nursing home, I said no. And I kept saying no. They kept calling. I kept saying no. So, finally, they called and I said, "Okay." So, now that I've been a commissioner, I'm glad that I am a commissioner. What I've done for housing and myself has been wonderful. When I first got on the board, there were no air conditions in housing. We have air conditions now. When I got on board, one resident was in a nursing home crying for help. Well, I knew how that felt because that's where I had been one time. Well, I knew how that felt because that's where I had been one time. I got him out. I've done many things for the Authority and the residents since I've been in housing. And it would be my pleasure to continue to serve them because we have issues that need to be addressed. And the residents cannot be left out, no matter what the problems we have in housing. The residents is always first. My first concern is always the residents. And it would be much appreciated by you all if you would let me continue to serve the Omaha Housing Authority as I have done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, Mr. Festerson? Mr. Thompson?
Yes, going back to city legal. Paul Kratz?
Yes, sir.
Is this council covered under the assumption that what we did before, which was lay it over to get it straightened out, that we did our due diligence? And are we covered by the fact that there was a public announcement of the meeting and its minutes? Or is this council covered? Can you, can you fight that if we're challenged?
I do believe the council's covered. And yes, we'll fight anything, actually.
Successfully? You think you can?
Successfully. And successfully, too, yes.
All right. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to take a little bit of a leap of faith here and believe in my legal counsel and go back to my original position, which is to support this. But again, I'm, I'm, I just, and I'm not fussing, but I just don't like things that are messy. But there may be times when I'll have some messes, too. So you guys are going to have to put up with me someday, too. So I guess we'll, we'll share in that burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I just want to thank you, Neil, for your service to the OHA and the people who live in housing.
Joan, would you come back up, please?
For the record?
Joan Nigro.
I have spoken with the past executive director of the Housing Authority. And I've also heard him speak publicly in regards to this particular issue at a relatively large gathering. And I sort of had an idea on how I was going to vote. But one thing has just kind of set up a small yellow flag. Did you, as an OHA board member, see the final list that was sent to the mayor?
No, I didn't know there was a list.
You did not know that?
I did not know there was a list.
Okay. Thank you. Fred, would you come up and address the same question?
Sure. I've seen, I've seen, if your question is, have I seen the list?
Just the name, just repeat your name.
Fred Conley. I'm a Housing Authority.
Okay.
I have seen the list.
Okay. And that was the official list that went to the, to the mayor?
That was the list from the Housing Authority to the mayor. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Amputate me. Just try, I just want to think. I have no further questions. Did you call the question? We have no further lights. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted on a six-one vote. Ordinance on final reading, item number 20, ordinance to award a contract to Second Nature Public Recycling for dual-purpose litter can and collection and transportation of recyclables deposited therein at various locations throughout the city. A is an amendment of the whole, requested by the Law Department. B is documents submitted in opposition. And C is a new amendment of the whole, requested by Councilmember Festerson.
A public hearing was held on January 25th. Councilmembers, any questions? Or do we have them? Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Second Nature Recycling for their efforts to expand this recycling program to other parts in the city. And I thank them also for taking the time to meet with areas in my district that are proposed to be serviced by this contract. And let me say, I don't think anyone opposes the effort to expand recycling in the city, least of all any of us. But I did ask them to communicate with those business districts so they knew what was coming and if they had any opinions to express that they could do that with me. And none of them expressed concern. In fact, in Benson, the BID was considering moving forward with a recycling program similar to this. And in fact, sees this as a positive thing that'll scratch off something on their to-do list. I did receive concerns from the Dundee Business District, though, not with recycling, of course, but just with the visual nature of the new advertising on these new cans. And so what I have here today is a representation of their interests, which is Amendment 20C. It's an amendment of the whole, which would effectively remove Dundee from the expanded program. It only removes about 10 cans from the 138 that was proposed. And in fact, the amendment conceives that the program remains the 138 cans throughout the city should we find a different location for those 10 cans. And I think that we can do that. So with that and with this amendment, I'm supportive of the program and supportive of respecting the wishes of the merchants in Dundee not to have it at this time and would remove, and would move for Amendment number 20C.
Mrs. Stothard?
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked a bit about this this morning, but I know there are a lot of folks that are in the sign industry and business in Omaha that do have some concerns. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Kratz a question before we vote.
Yes, ma'am.
And the question that keeps on being brought up is they felt like that it violated city code. And I just want your statement on with the amendment that we added stating notwithstanding any provision of the Omaha Municipal Code to the contrary, then that would cover the issues that they are addressing if indeed they felt like that the advertising on these cans were a violation of the, what do they call them? The portable or the, what do they call them? What kind of signs? Temporary signs?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I'll answer that. There are two levels of, I guess, defense from that standpoint. One, by saying notwithstanding any other statute, the council who passes ordinances can just as easily waive ordinances by saying, quote, unquote, "notwithstanding." And secondly, the sign provisions do not and are not intended to impact what is essentially a public service, and that's collecting trash and removing trash. So I think whatever decision the council makes, it's covered.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
If I may have a representative, if you can come forward just for a second for me, please. I know I seconded the amendment and I'd like to move forward with it, but I wanted to get your impressions about or your feelings about continuing to have the 138 cans, just looking for another place to put 10 of them.
Thank you. Dedrick Gill, 13505 H Street, president of Second Nature. We, we worked very diligently over the last year with Public Works and we put together a very successful pilot and it had some issues. You know, there were some people that were concerned. But I would say that the most important thing we did, councilman, is we put together an economic and a business plan and a model that we felt was very fair and would allow my firm to be able to provide this service. And make no mistake, we are paying for the collection of the recyclables from the sponsors' revenue. And I made that, or my company did that bid based on the fact that we were able to include those 10 containers. Actually, I believe the ones in question are actually nine of the 11 there. I don't think that it's fair for us to have to change that now midstream. And I know that I don't have a contract yet. And I know that you guys have to do that. And I respect Councilman Festerson's position. We have run into some opposition in the past with this. And the biggest issue was getting them there. Once they're there, once the people see that they're being used, that the recyclable material is being diverted, that the ads are in fact, have to be approved by planning, by Public Works, and with input from the certain associations that are involved, everybody seems to settle down on this. I'm simply asking that you allow me to do this contract as we bid it. And we would, I had sent an email to Councilman Festerson indicating that I wanted to compromise and I wanted to talk about and see if there was some midway. We would even be willing, you know, to do like a six-month or a nine-month trial. After such time, if there's still heated objection or consent over it, we'll remove the cans at our own cost and we'll get them out of there. But I believe, and it's been my experience with what we've seen throughout the pilot period, that it's going to be well-received. And it's something that Omaha needs. My concern is if we don't include the 10 containers, again, we've got some capital outlay there. That's not the major issue. But I don't want the wall to start crumbling and not be a consistent, sustainable plan for the city. And I'm concerned if we make an exception for one area, which, you know, my own personal opinion is there's as many businesses there that want it as it don't, or as many members. But if I make, you know, if we make that concession, then it's going to be much more difficult than the other areas. So that's all I'm asking, is that you guys give us a shot. Trust your Public Works area. Trust our business acumen. The fact that we have had several people in the downtown area with requests that are very positive on this. There are some that haven't been, but by most accounts, positive. And let us go about doing it as a contract stated. And if you tell me I got to do the other, I'll do the other. But I just think that it's going to create an issue.
So are you saying that it, would it be difficult, then, to try and find another location for the 10 cans? Or?
I'm not saying it would be difficult.
I mean, 10 being the number 10, not 10 cans.
Yes.
But it would be, it would be an issue for you?
It would be an issue to make the economic side of that work. We've got a sponsor allocated right now for 80%, excuse me, 75% of the containers that are there. And that's across the whole project. And one of the enticing reasons for this particular client to commit to this is the fact that they would be able to portray a green message, a non-competitive, green message about energy usage in the areas of Dundee and Benson. And I understand Benson's not an issue. The real issue's the Dundee area. So yes, it would be difficult to make that economic model fit if I had to relocate at this point.
Okay. Okay. I'll yield the floor for next. Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thank you. Thanks. I'd just add, and we've had several conversations about this and I appreciate the discussions we're having and trying to make this work for the whole city. But I would add, though, that in the conversations with the Dundee merchants, I do believe it is the large majority of them that do not support this. There was an emergency meeting of 13, in which 13 merchants attended. 11 out of the 13 were opposed. One abstained and one was okay with it, I think. And I think that's the majority of merchants in Dundee. It's not that big. So I merely request that we respect their views of design primarily. This is an aesthetic issue for them, not an issue of recycling or even ad content, per se. And it's not, this isn't unprecedented. We had this issue in the old market and we no longer do these cans in the old market for the same reason. And as I said at pre-council, if there's two places in the city I can think of that have maybe the highest radar, radar up for aesthetics and those concerns, it's probably the old market and Dundee. So in doing what we've done here, I think it's consistent with the new zoning laws we adopted for Dundee just recently and their upcoming streetscape project. And I think that's how they view it. And I think we should help them in that regard. And I do think the program can't continue with 138 cans, even if 10 of them aren't where we initially thought they might be. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Festerson, would you be agreeable to doing the test period? You know, which, that's what you indicated, right?
Yes, sir.
And if, and if it wasn't acceptable at the end of the test period, then you would remove the?
Remove at our cost, yes.
No, I wouldn't. I think that's a reasonable suggestion, but I don't think that helps the issue. I think they've considered it. They've had a long, lengthy discussion about it as recently as Friday. I don't think at this time they're willing to have the program in their business district, nor would a pilot project be received very well.
Thank you. No further lights? We have a motion and a second for approval of 20C, which is an amendment to the amendment of the whole.
No, it's actually an amendment of the whole.
Would you repeat that, Mr. Gray?
20C is an amendment of the whole. It includes both of the two amendments.
I stand corrected.
Roll call. Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The amendment of the whole is adopted on a five to two vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda, item number 21, shall be held on a third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item 22, ordinance to provide appropriations for approving the extension of a contract with Douglas County for booking and detention of prejudicated juveniles under the age of 18.
Public hearing on item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next item.
Item 23, ordinance to approve an agreement for the sale of city-owned real property. The city is authorized under an agreement with Santa Francis House to convey the property located at 1131 North 18th Street.
Public hearing on item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Council President and councilmembers. Howard Dotson, 610 South 32nd Avenue. I'm here to affirm this arrangement to support Santa Francis. Last Tuesday, I was working with Omaha Police Department officers trying to get folks into Santa Francis and off the street, and I walked through the bunks and saw all the beds full. Some of you may know, down at the river, there are folks living in tents, folks putting themselves at risk for carbon monoxide and setting their tents on fire. Last year, we tried to get Room in the Inn, which is a model outside of Nashville and other cities. Right now, when the homeless shelters are at full capacity, a mother has to send her nine-year-old son to be with the men while she's with the women. Unfortunately, that model did not take off. So nights like tonight, when it's this cold, when the shelters are at full capacity, it's really hard for Santa Francis Open Door &amp; Stevens to accommodate the homeless families. Thank God for Lydia House for this winter, but the folks on the river tonight are going to be very cold, and may we pray that no one dies. So for you to expand in this partnership with Santa Francis so we can get more units available to these folks, may the day come when no one freezes on our streets. So thank you for considering this partnership.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed, next item.
Resolution, item number 25, or I'm sorry, item 24, ordinance to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and Papio, Missouri NRD for the Design, Construction, Operation, Maintenance, Repair, Replacement, Regulation, and Ownership of the Zerinsky Lake Water Quality Basin Number One Project.
Public hearing on item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Resolutions, item number 25, resolution, the lottery operators agreement between the city of Omaha and EH PV Lottery Services, DVA Big Red Keno, should be in hereby renewed for a term of five years.
Public hearing continued to today. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Bill Harvey, and 11248 John Gulp will be part of General Counsel for Big Red Keno. We certainly appreciate the council's consideration of this resolution to extend the contract. We appreciate all the thoughtful consideration you've given during the layover period, the opportunity to talk to you and discuss all the issues, and so we thank you for all that time and asked for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion today. I'd like to lay this item over until our March 1st meeting, and that would be for the purpose to continue, to allow the city law department to continue negotiating with Big Red Keno.
With the continued talks, do you see Big Red Keno's position changing?
I don't, Mr. President. I mean, we're certainly willing to do whatever the city's pleasure is here, but we've had the layover period, we've had a number of discussions about this. We've actually been working with the administration since early last summer to come up with a plan for the renewal and to discuss the options for renewal. And what we've done is made a very substantial commitment toward capital improvements in our business, both at Peony Park and throughout our satellite system, and we're also looking at an upgrade or planning an upgrade of all of our software and equipment. And so what our advice is, is that the best way to move forward with the contract is to move forward and let us continue that capital investment plan. We're actually already in the midst of that, and we kind of have things on hold right now, you know, pending the resolution of the renewal. But we're eager to get going forward with that, and I don't think another three weeks would change my recommendation to the council in that regard.
Thank you. Mr. Stothard?
Mr. Harvey, you can stay right there. I may, you may get the same answer, but I'm going to ask the question in a little different way. Do you see any risk as far as what's in best interest for the city to lay it over another three weeks?
You know, I do see some risk. I see some risk in, just in terms of delay. I mean, delaying another three weeks makes us put our plans on hold for another three weeks, and that's just three more weeks that we don't get to do that reinvestment and don't get to get those things into the game that we'd really like to do, the reinvestment we've discussed at Peony Park Main Game and also the software. And we've actually made some really good progress on that, and we're really eager to keep that moving forward. We think any delay, you know, can potentially harm those factors. And, you know, of course, we also have management employees that we've assembled in our company. You know, the time to renew is getting shorter. As I said, we've, you know, we've been talking about this for about a year, and so is anybody going to, you know, quit over that in the next three weeks? I kind of doubt it, but I think the risk is there. So, you know, our goal would be to be able to move that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Thank you. My intention here today is, you know, we've been provided some additional information just today from Big Red Keno, and I would like to be able to share that with our attorneys. And my intention would be to maybe structure our agreement so that we would put a little bit of structure to the improvements that Big Red would make in the future to grow our Keno business for Big Red Keno as well as for the city of Omaha. So that is my intention here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm on the Keno Committee, so I appreciate Councilman Mulligan's interest in the issue. And I think it was appropriate to lay it over and get more information on it and have this conversation about the contract in detail. But I think at the end of the day, it comes down to, you know, discussions over probably less than a half percent of the handle we're talking about here, and that's a handle of about $54 million, and this, so this might mean, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. And it's also a conversation about how are we expanding the game and making it improve for the city and for Big Red. And to date, that direction has been to reinvest in your facilities and the technology and all those things. So it might be helpful for the group if you could go through that a little bit, the investments you are making compared to the couple hundred thousand dollars we're talking about in discussions here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Festerson. Just to summarize very briefly, we've made a commitment to reinvest over the course of 2010 and 2011, about three-quarters of a million dollars back into the game. That includes a number of different things. The biggest items in there are reinvestment we're making at the Peony Park Main Game facility, basically a renovation both inside and outside. We've concluded most of the inside improvements of that already in 2010, and already spent a lot of that money. And what we're looking at doing is now making a lot of renovations to the outside so that people can see that it's a new facility. We're also going to, you know, we're going to add some things like volleyball and so forth that'll give us additional visibility, which is really what we're, you know, what we're looking for to get out of those improvements. That's part of our reinvestment plan. The other part, which I think is, which I know is going to be the bigger part of our reinvestment plan, is a reworking of all of our software and equipment. And here's the thing about that, it's going to take a very substantial investment and commitment by us to do that, because the software we work with is really fairly unique in terms of being able to sustain all the 180-some satellites that, and, you know, and hopefully continue to grow that, that we have connected to the Omaha system. It's not just an off-the-shelf product. We currently operate on a Stratus mainframe computer, which has been a great and a very reliable computer for us. It's the same type of computer that banks and hospitals use to operate, you know, operations that just can't afford to go down, and that's why we chose that. But frankly, that system is a little past its, you know, while it's still reliable, it's a little past its prime in terms of, you know, kind of, I guess you'd say, the pizzazz factor. We really have some very exciting ideas for how we can improve that game and create a lot more, a lot more interest for the players in terms of being able to show different configurations of the game at different locations, being able to personalize that a little bit, and really do some very exciting things that we think will very much benefit the handle and bring that handle back. As you know, the handle's declined over the last couple of years due to recession and smoking ban, and that handle, we want to see that handle come back, but we don't believe it'll come back without a lot of hard work. I mean, we think we've got to get in there, we've got to spend the investment money, and we're willing to make that commitment and do that.
What was that dollar figure again you estimated?
We would estimate that the redo on the software would be a minimum of a million and a half.
Okay. And should there be changes legislatively to the game, that would be additional?
That would be additional, because that doesn't include any investment that we'd have for the legislative changes that are being discussed. That's correct.
And if you need to do that, that's, of course, Big Red's expense?
That would be totally our expense and not the city's. That's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you. Mr. Mungard, could you come to the podium, please?
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney.
Hello, Tom. Tom, could you, just for the record here, just state that, what was it, in 1995, Big Red Keno was given an additional 1%?
Let's go back to 1991, when Big Red Keno bid for the contract with the Keno operation. They bid based upon a payment of 13% of gross play. So they were awarded the contract based on receiving 13%. In 1995, they were trying to build the satellite network, so they asked the council to amend that and give them an extra 1% if they would spend that on expenses that are going to be incurred by bars and other places that were getting satellites, specifically equipment, insurance, supplies, those types of things. Those were expenses that were either being carried by Big Red or carried by the satellite place. The council agreed to do that, to give them 1%, if they spent that money on the majority of, if they provided those supplies, et cetera, to the majority of Keno locations. Big Red did that, in fact, they went further. They provided supplies and et cetera, and basically underwrote the expenses of all of these satellite locations. Well, since 1995, they've been getting that 1% and using it for that purpose, among other things, and have built, has built the satellite network quite significantly, up to around, I think, 182 currently. So we looked at it and decided, looked to see, well, is that 1% incentive payment that the council granted them in 1995, is it really necessary? Is the growth of the game and the changes that we saw by, no longer, Big Red no longer has competition, they're the sole operator, the strength of the satellite game, the number of locations, the long-term, you know, basically, has Keno become part of the fabric of bar life in Omaha? Do you need these incentives, and does the city need to underwrite these incentives with that 1%? So we went back to see whether that 1% that was granted Big Red in 1995 for these purposes could be rolled back, and that all or part of it could be then given to the taxpayers with the city recovering that from the Keno game rather than using it for those purposes. So we've had discussions with Big Red as to how we might be able to do that, what the effect of that would be, whether that would impact the satellite network, would we see bars drop out of the satellite network, because now they either had to, either they had to pick up more of the expense or Big Red had to pick up more of the expense. Those discussions really have gone nowhere.
And do we have a mechanism in the proposed contract that, I mean, are we guaranteed that the full 1% is being spent on improvements to the game?
No.
No.
That 1%, Big Red has to, we have a guarantee that Big Red will cover those expenses for at least the majority of the satellites. What they do with the rest of the money is up to them.
So what, just based on today's volumes, what would that additional 1%, what dollar amount would that equate to?
Oh, based on the play during 2010, that's roughly $530-some thousand dollars.
$530-some thousand dollars, okay. Well, we, I just, you know, I've got some information today here from Big Red Keno, and, you know, for the last five years, you know, we've had years here, in the year 2006, they spent $704,000 in what they say is improvements. It also has to do with a lot of day-to-day repairs that they've done to their existing facilities. But there's been years where it's been $251,000, $176,000, and $143,000. So there's, to me, there's a gap here between the additional 1% being spent on improvements and what's actually being spent.
Probably so, and that gap is smaller today than it has been in the past. In 2007, I believe, we had a handle of around $63 million, so at that point, the 1% was $630-some thousand dollars.
So I think maybe a compromise might be if we had, if we inserted some language into the new agreement where we would at least be guaranteeing the city of Omaha that the 1% that is being afforded to Big Red Keno is actually put back into growing the game.
That's certainly something that has been a little bit floated out during the discussions, that we continue this incentive program, but the money has to be, that 1% has to be spent exclusively toward that incentive program rather than something else, I mean, such as operating costs of Big Red, improvements that they want to put into their system, which any business would do to stay in business and stay competitive.
Yeah. And to my colleagues, that is my intention here today, is to maybe put a little more structure into this agreement to ensure that the city of Omaha is being afforded the opportunity to grow this game, which will then, you know, grow the revenues for Big Red Keno as well as the city of Omaha.
And if I might, that's been part of the discussion, that if the purpose of this 1% back in 1995 was to give incentives to bars to become part of the satellite network, A, it seems to have worked, because we've grown the network tremendously, and B, yes, maybe we should have a structure where that's the only way it gets used, that if the money is not going to go to the taxpayers, it at least goes to the satellites so that they have an incentive to be in the program.
Thank you, Tom. No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Harvey?
You have to state your name.
Yes, I'm sorry, Bill Harvey.
Two quick questions, one being the assertion that last couple of years, all of the 1% was not used?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to address that.
Did you address that?
The data I provided to Mr. Mulligan actually shows what our actual capital expenditures were. Those were just expenditures we had that were treated as capital expenditures as opposed to expense items on our, you know, financial reports and so forth for the last five years. If you look at the total, it's $1.6 million, I think, from 2006 through 2010. So there's a significant amount there that we've spent toward capital expenditures. There were some years where it was less, those were the years where we got affected by the smoking ban, and we were actually operating right there for a couple of years. So that made it, you know, obviously more difficult to make investments back into that game. But in this last year, you'll see that those investments have gone back up, and that's pursuant to our commitment to reinvest in this game and move it forward again.
Last year for 2010, what was the dollar amount of investment for reinvesting back into making the game better?
As far as just the capital investment, that was $339,000. But that doesn't include all the amounts that we've spent towards the satellite program that Mr. Mungard's discussed. I don't have those numbers here in front of me, but I can tell you that our commitment to that and to growing the game exceeds that 1%. You know, I guess what I'd say is, we're, you know, we're certainly amenable to talking about putting things in the contract, and we can always continue those discussions or whatever you'd like to do. Our concern is just being able to move forward with our programs. We've always tried to be an open book with the city. Our books are subject to audit at any time anybody wants to come in. We're happy to share any of that with you or to bring that information to you. We do file financial reports with the city monthly with our, you know, when we provide the revenues. So we've always tried to be very transparent in terms of where that money that we received around the game is going.
Would you be amenable to saying that you keep the 1% and should you not put it back into reinvestment and it rolls over to the city?
You know, I guess I'd have to understand how that language would look or how it would work. Conceptually, I don't have a problem with that, but I think we're already doing that.
Okay, in other words, to help, helps, you know, the push, the whole idea that it goes towards reinvestment, and if it doesn't, then the city then gets to get that benefit?
Yeah. Again, Councilman Thompson, I'd have to look at that language and understand how that would work. I mean, what I want to understand is what kind of commitment we were making there in terms of a contractual commitment and how that would affect us. What we do is we spend the money in the, you know, in the early years, and then we expect to get payment back in the out years. So there's sometimes, there's maybe some years when you're making certain amounts of capital investment, and then there's certain out years when you're, you know, you're expecting to get some benefit back from that.
Okay. In your mind, the 1%, should it average out over the years to where you're not getting a profit from that 1%?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's always been true.
Okay. Getting back to the software, do satellites all feed off of a mainframe? Or?
Currently, the satellites feed off a mainframe computer, yes, that's correct.
So when you do, when you do a software update, it's not at every location, it's at a main location, and then the satellites feed into that?
That's actually not true. We're going to have to, we're going to actually have to upgrade our software and equipment at all locations.
At all locations?
Through this process, that's correct.
Okay.
And we're already in the process of upgrading our printers at all locations. We're kind of tackling that as the first part. The second part's going to be tackling the display capabilities for the system.
Okay.
And then the final part will be tackling the actual, the actual heart of the system, the wagering part of the system.
Okay. And the total bill for software update, again?
The total bill is going to be a minimum of $1.5 million.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to err on the side that in order to make money, you have to spend money, and that the game needs to be improved, because if you keep an old game and you don't keep it fresh, then people won't, they won't visit and purchase. So based on that, I will support.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan? No further questions. No further lights, we have a motion and a second to lay over to March 1st, 2011. Roll call. Festerson?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Yes.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Mr. President?
No.
Motion to move the approval. No lights, roll call. Festerson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted on a six-one vote.
Thank you very much.
We will bring up item number 30, the supplement next. 30 is resolution that the attached professional service agreement between the city of Omaha and O'Hare, Lindsay, and Associates for lobbying services is hereby approved, and you have an amendment of the whole requested by the administration.
Public hearing on item number 30 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Patrick Rinn, 4910 California Street. I'm not against lobbying the state legislature on behalf of the city. What I think should be considered is the following. We've got 13 state senators that represent this area. They've got to lay the land down. They've got a lay of the land down there. They've taken oaths on both sides of the fence to represent their districts, which are in the city. Why not plug in to that expertise, the lay of the land? You've got a couple people down there that know what's going on, Brad Ashford, Brenda Council. Among the two people I know, and I know they're both astute, sharp, and they're honest and ethical, and they're respected down there. Why do we have to spend $73,000 when we have representation down there already? That might be a naive question, but why not get these 13 senators together and look at these four different bills, whether you're for or against these fees or taxes, and put in the work? It just seems to me an approach that has not been looked at yet. I do have one question, and I'll sit down, not to be flippant or naive. Is it legal to pay additional funds from this council or the city to a current state senator that's holding office for additional work to be performed on issues such as these four bills? Keep it all above board, nothing under the table, anything of that nature. They're down there anyway. I used to run around with a guy by the name of Neil Simon. He was a state senator. He taught me how to play backgammon, and I ran with him every few times a week for my life. But anyway, he used to say over and over again, it's not what you know, it's who you know to get things done down there. And I think most of you here would agree with that. Once again, just as an example, I'm not saying these two people in particular, but just to cover both sides of the fence. You've got a guy by the name of Brad Ashford that put that learning community together, which I was not necessarily for, but he had the pool and the leverage and the know-how to put that package together. That's got to be said. You've got a Brenda Council that sat on this board. I mean, she knows this city inside and out. She has a following. She lost to a popular mayor by only 700 votes. She's respected. She knows what's going on down there. I know that for a fact. Why aren't we doing more to take advantage of these senators that are already there? They're there every day, and open up some sort of a conduit with them to, again, I'm not even for these four bills particularly, but approach that, approach it from that viewpoint. And I have one question for Mr. Kratz, and I'll sit down. Is it illegal for the city to come up with some sort of a plan to supplement a state senator for special interest? And if so, why?
We'll get that answer for you.
It's just being creative.
Oh, all right. We'll get that answer for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr.-- Thank you. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Any other?
Amendment of hold.
Opponents?
Amendment of hold.
Amendment of hold.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerstein? You, you're for, Mrs. Stothard?
We have some buttons going crazy over there. Okay.
I'll oblige, just to keep things rolling smoothly here. Thanks, Mr. President and Councilmember Stothard. I just say, I'm not supportive of the proposed contract on our agenda as number 30, and primarily my concerns are timeframe and cost. But I don't question the need that Omaha needs to do a better job of reaching out to our senators, explaining our issues here in Omaha, and really engaging our mutual interests and forging that better working relationship we seem to have a tough time doing. And it's not unusual for mayors and councils to engage additional help. In fact, I think every mayor and council have done that in modern times. So, I don't question that need either. I just question the duration and time primarily. So, taking a more strategic perspective is my interest, and I think that may be accomplished by what's been amended here on the floor, which is 30A, but we're willing to listen to further discussion on it. Because what that would do is stretch the tax dollars that are already budgeted for this under a contract that would be a year long and not just focused on occupation taxes, in fact, several of those things I didn't vote for in the first place. But this contract would represent all of our interests, whether that be financial. There were five bills on CIR reform yesterday. There were five bills we discussed on keynote this morning, and other five bills we discussed on economic development this morning in our committee meeting. And so, there certainly is the volume and the need for our interests to be represented and maybe a little more effectively than we have in the past. So, I'm hoping to the notion of engaging that, this being the first year of a two-year session, and if we did that in a year-long fashion and engaged all these interests and didn't dismiss all of our responsibilities to be down there too, because I think in many ways, we're the most effective spokespersons for the city, mayor, city council, but with the help of contracts like this, that may be of interest. And I think in doing so, that reduces the costs and puts it more in line with what we've seen with other major entities that are engaged, and it's something I'm willing to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. We have a motion and a second on the amendment of hold.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, it is.
Roll call.
Festerstein?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted on a four to three vote. Oh, this is a amendment of hold. We have, that's all. One vote only, so we're fine. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, agenda items number 26 through 27 shall be laid over for three weeks for publication in public hearing. Item number 28 is Chairman of the Board of Equalization reports approval of plans of assessments and adjustments made at the regular meeting held February 1, 2011.
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Festerstein?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?
No.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call.
Mr. President, second. Festerstein?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mulligan?